Afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the San Luis Obispo County Flood and Cold and Water Conservation District Resource Advisory Committee. First, we'll start out with the introductions. Tom Burden, District 4. Christine.
Christine Mollin, Environment.
I'm Eric Green, also in our middle of large.
Kim Guthrie, City of Roy, Raleigh.
And yet another environment of large.
And Laurel Barton, World Bay City.
One night for social CS.
I'm the Chipping RCB Alter.
Dominic Brock, RCB.
Integrator, District 4.
Mark Batney, I'm a consultant.
Steve Carter, Slow County, Miami.
We know.
I am paid agent of the city.
Mr. Parker, I'm.
Tim Walters, Development at Large, and we apologize in advance. I gotta leave at 2:30. Sorry.
Okay.
Andy Bees, San Luis Obispo City.
Mary.
Jim P, Libra, CS.
Mary Donlin, Andy Martin.
Nick Teague, City of San Luis Obispo.
Hey, Shady, Shannon's name on our.
Listening in on this and then doing the.
Josh Porter, County San Luis Obispo Public Works. Good luck, three of you.
Brendan Clark, County Public Works Committee Secretary.
Joey Style, County Public Works. We have online Joey. Yeah, so for those joining on Zoom, I'll go ahead and call you in if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself. That'd be great. Starting with Deborah Logan.
Deborah Logan, TCSD.
All right, Patricia Wilmore.
Patricia Wilmore, Paso Robles Mine Country Alliance Ag at Large Alternate.
Sarah Ko.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ko. I'm with DWR.
Austin McCollum.
Austin McCollum, Black and Beach.
All right, Courtney Howard.
Hi, Courtney Howard, Water Resources Division Manager for County Public Works.
Matt Cook.
Matt Cook's online, Golden State Water Company Los Osos.
Thank you. Matthew Scudato.
Hello, Matthew Scudato, Santa Barbara County Water Agency.
Toby Moore.
Yeah, Toby Moore, Water Resources Manager for Golden State Water Company.
And Jenny Williamson.
Jenny Williamson, County Public Works Water Resources.
All right, did we miss anyone?
Okay, thank you, Joey. Just confirming also that we do have the norm present here today.
Yep.
All right, so some business. Item, or item number two is approval of the June 2024 meeting minutes.
June 5th. We have two June meetings.
Oh.
And they looked perfect to me, so unless something we do both in one motion.
I, I think it might be better if we do separate, Eric, just to make sure that if people want to comment.
And unless someone else has a correction or amendment, I will hold the June meeting minutes.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to the.
Upstate.
All.
That's on the 25th, mid minutes of the 25th.
No, meetings of the, of the fifth. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the June 25th, 2024 special meeting.
Again, unless someone has a correction or an amendment, take this correction off. Okay, here's the, the location was changed. The actual.
Thank you.
And it's the veterans hall, correct?
It's all. I didn't even wonder about them.
All right, there's a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? One extension.
Thank you, Lee.
Okay. All right. We move on now to item number four, or we'll see what we can take into account of stat regarding SB 552 county drought planning requirements. I'm running, it's gonna, well, we present that item.
Yeah, I'll get us kicked off here in just a second.
All right, so. Thanks, everyone, for coming today. Today, myself and Josh Porter from our Water Resources Division will be presenting on Senate Bill 552, drought planning for small water suppliers and rural communities. And what you're gonna hear today is we'll have a background. We'll do some county drought planning history and some state drought planning history, and I'm hoping to come together now in Senate Bill 552. Josh will cover the goals, what other counties are doing to, so far, and what assistance the state is providing, and then I'll come back up and talk about our county strategy and, and the next step is moving forward. So with that, I'll have Josh come up, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Brendan. So, beginning with the county background, so in a, oh, we all know during the 2012 was the start of a major drought, ended in 2016, the County Board of Supervisors input a emergency proclamation in 2014 due to that drought. And with that proclamation, they created a county drought task force that was directed by the CIO at the time. This task force met regularly during the drought to discuss actions to take the best mitigate the effects of the drought across the entire county. That emergency proclamation was ultimately lifted in 2017. However, the task force still stood in place to prepare for future droughts. And then in 2019, over moving forward into 2020, we had our Water Resources Division, Courtney Howard. She participated with CDAG in, in efforts to form the first language for SB 552 before it was written into law in 2021, which you'll hear about in a second. But her main efforts at the time were to add the ability for counties to implement that SB 552 language into existing plans and programs to deviate from creating just specific SB 552 plans as it was leaning towards that first. And then we moved to July 2021, when the Regional Water Infrastructure Resiliency Plan was published by the Flood Control District. This plan is analyzed and scored how vulnerable to droughts certain areas of the county were at the time, and then it's been helpful comparing that to what the state data has come out with. Then lastly, we had another emergency proclamation from the County Board of Supervisors in 2021 that lasted until 2023. During that time, the County Drought Task Force was activated again, and again, it's standing by in place to prepare the county for the next drought. So with that about the county, now we move on to the state. Again, the 2012, 2016 California drought was very severe. Changed a lot and led to more requirements, more laws being input, as you can see here. Just in 2018 alone, Senate Bill 606 and Assembly Bill 1668 were signed, and these both built on Governor Brown's water conservation efforts by creating a new foundation for long-term improvements in water conservation and drought planning through the establishment of efficient water use guidelines, along with a framework for implementing new standards that had to be in place by 2022. So one of the main things that the state, that DWR, had to do in part of those two bills right there was to begin identifying small water suppliers in rural communities that were at risk of drought and water shortage. And that, as you could, that would be the start of SB 552, which was then later signed in 2021, and that just furthered the requirements more specifically for the rural communities, and further those requirements on local agencies and the counties. So, moving on, we have the state bills for SB 552, and I have the water code up there. But SB 552 is just looking towards the future of the state as a whole, and for the state to become more proactive rather than reactive when it comes to droughts and water shortages. And the main goals are shown on the right there. Reduce the risk of water shortage for small water suppliers, state small water systems, and individual domestic wells, while improving access to financial and technical resources for them. And then this in turn promotes drought planning through the coordination and collaboration where conducted by local agencies and the county. Now, moving on, we have, so obviously, the state has 56 counties, I believe. So other counties have to implement the same Senate bill, just like we do. Here are some strategies that some others have taken. For the bill, there's no set template. There's only a guidebook that they provide called the County Drought Resilience Plan Guidebook. So it's kind of led to counties having unique methods of doing it, especially when we have that ability to try and implement SB 552 language into existing plans and programs. So, but still, some counties such as Tulare and Madera Counties have opted to create that SB 552 specific plan, which is a drought and water shortage risk analysis and response plan. But then we still see on the other side of the coin that, such as Santa Cruz County, that they're trying to implement their GSPs that the GSAs have to create and update every five years. So using those instead to implement the SB 552 language as required by the, the Senate bill. Which then moves us to, well, how is the state assisting all the counties with this? And that's through a lot of financial and technical support, or as much as they could provide. Right off from the get-go, after the Senate bill was signed, DWR offered a choice between financial assistance or direct technical assistance. That financial assistance was in the form of a $125,000 grant, while the direct technical assistance is provided from one of their consultants, Stan Tech, for that same amount. And those additional, they also provided additional tools and resources, such as the Water Shortage Vulnerability Tool, the, the County Drought Resilience Plan Guidebook, as I previously mentioned. And then also, they provided two unique county collaboration efforts that are the California County Cafe Series and then the Drip Collaborative, which I'll go into a little bit more. I think the note about the state assistance to the counties is that currently a commission is on state mandates to determine if SB 552 costs will be reimbursed by, reimbursable by the state. So it's not fully, the full funding availability is not completely there yet. So more on that in the future, hopefully. And then for small water suppliers, the state also provides financial assistance or financial resources for them, and that's in the form of the State Water Resources Control Board, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, and then also the SAFER Program. So moving on to the Water Shortage Vulnerability Tool, as you see here in the image, I have it specific for the county, and there's two main things here to show, which is the physical vulnerability and then the social vulnerability that they include in it, and then also the number of state smalls and domestic wells. All of this has been made specifically for each county and to utilize in their SB 552 efforts. And it's a collection of all the county data that the state has acquired so far. So hope, they hope to acquire more data, work with the counties better to make sure that this is accurate or at least make it as accurate as possible. The main thing to consider with the physical vulnerability is it is a, a combination of all the physical statuses that are in that area. So all the physical statuses that may or may not affect water quality and quantity. And then for the social side, it's more about the social status of the constituents in that area. And then, as you can see in the image there, our most vulnerable areas thus far are city and town boundaries, and then, of course, the surrounding areas around those, because that is where it's, we see a lot of the domestic wells and the state's small water systems. So now, moving on to the, the guidebook, it was developed by DWR in collaboration with other state agencies, which were the State Water Board, CalOES, and the Governor's Office of Planning. If advisory resource for, or counties to utilize in their development of their SB 552 drought resilience plans. It provides general guidance and information on all the aspects of SB 552, so such as, you'll hear them later on with Brendan through the requirements, but task force formation, available statewide risk assessment data and tools, short-term responses to emergencies, long-term mitigation strategies and actions, and then finally, plan implementation strategies and considerations. And then to the right on this slide, I provided a general workflow chart that was present in the guidebook. It just shows how the state, how, how the state wants counties to work to, excuse me, work through the SB 552 requirements. So then lastly, for the state assistance, we have our coordination efforts, which, as I said earlier, is the California County Cafe Series and then the Drip Collaborative or Drought Resilience Interagency Partners. So for the Cafe Series, it's monthly one-hour meetings that are held virtually and led by DWR staff. These are completely for the counties to help support in their implementation of SB 552. I think also, small water suppliers have been present at some of the meetings, so it's open to them as well, not just the counties. At these meetings, there's plenty of discussion. All it is, is discussion of SB 552 requirements between the counties. Presentations are also given by anyone that volunteers for that topic that is talked at that meeting. And it's just a perfect time for one county that has completed a part of their, a good SB 552 requirement or has a good foothold on it to showcase what they, what effort they have done on it for other counties to then utilize that to their own efforts. And then also, just provides opportunities for dialogue between all the counties. And then, on the other side, we have the Drought Resiliency Interagency Partners Collaborative. It's the state's Standing Drought and Water Shortage Task Force, and it's an interagency, so it's made up of not only state agencies, but also non-state agencies. And it, its meetings take the form of a triennial public forum. While their main goals are to align state programs, funding, and strategies to anticipate and proactively address climate-driven effects throughout the state, their current most efforts are creating recommendations to then provide to the state legislature, which one very important recommendation to note in this presentation is, they want to do a recommendation for the, an update to the SB 552 language of the actual bill, which is they aim to create structured, expect, more structured expectations in the law by finding and addressing those gaps they find in it through further discussion. And currently, they're looking at some revisions to the county requirements, as well as the state requirements. And for the county, we're, they're looking at implementing deadlines and plan outlines and realistic expectations and guidelines, while for the state side, they're wanting to implement more additional or more additional tools and resources for the counters. So here, I'll pass it back to Brendan to talk about the requirements. Thanks, Josh.
All right, so a lot about what the law is and what's available, and here is what's required in it. There are requirements for state small water systems. These are systems with 15 to 2,999 connections. So, systems with 3,000 or more connections or serve more than 3,000 acre feet a year are subject to the urban water management planning, and, you know, it's very detailed process, how drought contingency plans as a part of that. So this law starts to require some of those types of analysis and planning efforts for smaller systems. But, and then I'll just skip down to the state. The law required the state to create their drought task forces. Josh mentioned, it's called the Drip Collaborative, and create a vulnerability tool that Josh showed the screenshot of. And, but there are a number of requirements for the counties. These requirements include having a standing drought task force with regular communication. And the way we're going to meet that is through our existing task force and this, this committee. And so where, where we want to go is staff is having that drought task force, you know, report out to the public and to water stakeholders through the RAP. That's a, these are established forums for this. As far as the drought and water shortage plan, we're gonna take a multi-pronged approach here under existing efforts to meet these requirements. So the vulnerability and risk assessment requirement is gonna be covered by the Master Water Report. And so, as Josh mentioned, we, and presented a few years ago on the Regional Water Infrastructure Resiliency Plan, there was a vulnerability and risk score methodology in that plan, looking at, are you a single source? Do you have multiple sources? And going through this qualitative assessment. We are going to be automating that and improving that process in the Master Water Report. And so that, this is where we plan to cover this requirement for consolidation. This, we're planning on utilizing the state technical assistance. We don't have any county-wide plans run by the flood control district to look at consolidation. And so, taking advantage of what the state's offering and how they've outlined what a consolidation evaluation looks like in the guidebook, we're gonna ask the state to come in and, we already started that conversation, but this, this is how we're planning on meeting that requirement. And then these last four requirements, our plan here is via our update to the Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so when we get into how, how is the county providing assistance to well owners and small systems, this is a plan that's being updated right now. The consultant contract was awarded last month at the board, and, and this update is, is going to include elements that are gonna meet SB 552. And so to summarize this all in a different way, we're, we have a four-pronged approach to meeting the requirements of this law via our drought task force. That's run by the Groundwater Sustainability Department, and so our district staff role is maybe helping that existing effort become SB 552 compliant. The vulnerability assessment is gonna be done by the Master Water Report, and we are the lead for that project. The consolidation analysis, we, in the Water Resources Division, district staff will be doing the project management for that, as the state consultant will be doing that effort for us. And then lastly, the hazard mitigation plan, it, that's being run by our administrative office via the Emergency Services, and we have been in with them, helping write the RFP. Josh was in the review team for the consultant process, and we have it built into the contract to make sure we're in, you know, we're meeting with the consultant in the development of this plan to make sure the elements about mitigation, short-term, long-term, emergency solutions, et cetera, are getting put into that hazard mitigation plan. And so with that, we'll go ahead and just open up for questions. There's no action recommended, but this is something staff has been working on for a couple of years. Thought it would be a good time. Good point to share. The, the plan is in motion, and yeah.
Eric. Is the process open to biodiversity-friendly efforts such as beavers? Now that the governor has signed legislation that makes it easier to basically help them regain territory, they are definitely a drought resiliency and mitigation factor. And often, these plans get written in ways that make it appear that all of the solutions are industrial or mechanical or whatever. But anytime fellow creatures can help other fellow creatures and us at the same time, I just want to be sure that it's not outside the box.
I, I don't think it's, you know, it's not excluded. I think. I think it. Where it's appropriate to be included, it could be, could be analyzed. I, I think this, the thinking about hazard mitigation plan and the requirements. I don't think that it's quite going, looking at like project planning in that, that sense. I think it's more mitigating the effects of when we're in a drought, but I think, you know. I know we have a regrowing beaver population, seen some good things there in Atascadero, so. I know I'm not, there's, I'm not like.
Water supply available to our wells.
Yeah.
Provides a certain resilience in droughts, then I would assume it would be a strategy.
Yeah.
Whether it's called a project or not.
Yeah.
This seemed to me to be, in fact, in 552, to be an in-house and downstream effort. And yet, on the drought task force there, you're upstream, because you've repeatedly been irrigating with sink. And it was feeling that when we have a, a major drought issue, asking for example, the two Central Valley water areas that are out of compliance, this signal, that it is the input that is the main driver of drought and mitigating input. For example, would you, if you are, what acuphas are drying up, you mean water supply, be able to order a reduction of irrigated water in preference for bringing in urban supplies and things like that? So it seems that, that, my experience has been in the drought, it's always been the state water project not providing anything or something like that, or low base getting too low, and not where they even stop leaks downstream. This just seems to be stopping leaks downstream, you know, only. And is there a way to integrate upstream and downstream together?
I think that's a good question as far as why the groundwater sustainability department is leading the task force. I think, you know, a number of our, you know, being groundwater is our main source of water throughout, for, for the most part, throughout the county. I think that makes sense, and, but I think the type of management actions you're talking about come at the, at the basin level, and maybe very basin to basin, and. You know, I, I defer to them. I, you know, I don't know when, what kind of triggers those would need to make. You know, that, that's gonna happen at, at the basin, in the basin management, or through the plan or through their management actions and things like that, on an individual basis, basin by basin. Yeah.
And I mean, somebody mentioned this, but, as far as deadlines for counties like on, are very, for county staff, very thick were areas that feeling that deadline. Are very good for county staff, very thick were areas that feeling that deadlines, you know, more more like, oh, this is going to be an important one to can anticipate. Might be a little tight on your end too, and then what's realistic for those kind of big public ones too. Obviously you all probably have a sense of how long it would take.
Yeah, so I think um, when Josh mentioned uh, there's state discussions about enhancing and adding on to SB five fifty-two. Um, part of that is because right, there is no timeline right now. There wasn't a deadline set to this, um, so it doesn't have the. Enforcement side, um, but we're uh, with the activities we have going on and the state assistance available, we're just, we're. You know, we're not going to wait around for a deadline to come upon us. Um, that's, yeah.
What you're, what you're going to do, it's really urgent coming up.
No.
No, the most urgent thing was forming of the task force. That was the only thing that necessarily had to be.
Thanks Josh, yeah, thank you. Yeah. Uh, Linda.
And and my question is directly about the task force. Do we have one in place and who is, what is the composition of that task force?
That's good. That's a great question. Our, when our task force was formed by the administrative office ten years ago. It was um, various county departments, uh, heads or representatives from agricultural department, um, from public works, from planning. Health, I believe, health department and others. I got, so it is, it's kind of an internal county task force, um, and um. Yeah, so that's the, that's the makeup of it and the advise the 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 C A O um, on drought-related issues items. So um, I do think to be in compliance uh, with the law. We need to have a way of that reporting out to the public like I've mentioned earlier. Um, so there'll be some kind of connection to this committee that we've frankly needs to figure out.
So it is a standing committee and it's resurrected on an as needed basis?
Well, it is standing now, um, because of the 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 law, um, but we had, um, I don't know how other counties have done it. But, you know, we um, we had started our task task force just because of the situations we were faced with. And um, so it's, um, but it is standing now. Um, it's, it's like, you know, it's not a advisory committee like we are. But it's a staff committee to advise us the administrative office. Now, yes.
Can you describe a little more about the consolidation analysis and what you guys are doing to manage that process?
Yeah, uh, that's tricky, the tricky one. Um. Are you, have you reviewed the requirements maybe more than I have? Like what's in the?
What's the spirit of it?
Only details. To give my, this might be a personal response, um, I I like the idea of an outside. Agency or not agency, an outside group giving a once-over, I don't know if they're going to look at mapping, do a mapping-based. You have these seven connection systems enveloped inside of a larger system. And they're going to just do the mapping and then say, these are prime candidates. Um, it could be that straightforward and maybe it gets more detailed from there. Um, but uh, I think that's, that's the. Probably way overly simplistic view, um, but I know I'm, I'm too, I'm looking forward to see what what that looks like. I've not personally done something like that before. Um, yeah.
Uh, sorry, on the vulnerability tool already, how there's, they provide state smallest. If you go into the data for them, they do actually provide, apparently D W R is able to get like a, a measurement. Of how far each one of the state small water systems is from a like a nearby small water system. So they have that, but it's just an estimate mileage away from them. And that's the nearest option thus far, but it's very simplistic so far. So we'd be liking to do more in the complex like, well, here's more options, actually. These are all the options you're looking at. And it's still up for debate.
So I'm not mistaken in circumstances where there's been large quality problems, small systems. The state word, maybe the regional words have required consolidation enforcement. So I don't know of places that's happened in parts of county, but it seemed like that is a certainly happened in the central valley.
Yeah.
No, we we don't seem to be pushing that from your perspective or vulnerability.
No.
Not forcing that, but I do in there as um, sorry, it was in the news. I I believe the city of Slow um, took in a state small system or consolidated. I don't know if that's not the right, took it, it's not the right word, but um.
Well, that's right, the one on the south side.
Yeah. Yeah, and the state, I think, is pushing it, yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, providing financial assistance for um, integrating that system and is that correct?
Yeah, they provide financial assistance.
Yeah.
Which system?
South.
South Agira.
By the Montessori School.
Yeah.
Um, Los Angeles Valley, South Agira, across the street from like P G and E and the R V parking.
And there's a small system there?
Mm-hmm, like an apartment type.
And it's separate on its own wells. I see that. Thank you.
Um, does this say, we've got San Simian as a classic, as a child. Uh, is that being taken on right away by this group?
Uh, I believe, well, San Simian's a unique case. They have filed to LAFCO of. I'm going to get the name of the the thing wrong, but like a petition to dissolve. And so LAFCO, the local area formation commission is evaluating options for them, I believe.
That was going to Cambria, didn't it?
I think it's, they're, they're evaluating options. So how many options are there? Like county, Cambria? What I, I mean, there's, there's a limited number of options there, but that process is happening in LAFCO because they. They asked for it to happen rather than it being um, the state coming in and saying it's time or whatever. Yes, I think we'll, any other questions? Otherwise we'll move on.
Okay. I'm seeing it ends up, so thank you, Josh. Then move on to item five, which I also believe Brendan is.
Correct.
All right, um, switch gears a little bit. Uh, so our special meeting in June. Um, I'm going to do this one sitting down, if that's all right. Our special meeting in June, um, we heard an update from Wes. Um, our supervising utilities engineer for state water about a one-time um, transfer opportunity that was passed. Um, by the board in, I believe, uh, August. Um, and so one of the things that Wes has mentioned in his ongoing updates is um, that they've been looking at updating our district policy. Um, for uh. Uh, for state water and like the criteria of use of that water. And um, so. There is a draft policy, um, and this was as kind of noted in our packet, um, was brought to the state water subcontractors advisory committee for an initial look. Um, in September and Wes is targeting a December presentation to this committee with the draft policy. Um, and as as he prepares to go to the board and we's, other works prepared to go to the board. And um, wanted to give the committee, this committee, an opportunity. Um, ahead of that December presentation, if there was interest in forming an ad hoc subcommittee. Um, to review um, the policy in more detail and and premise and like the documents attached um, with Wes. And could provide um, provide input and commentary when we come to December. Um, and have Wes present the item and and hopefully we, you know, the the committee considers supporting um, that change. Um, we could have an ad hoc subcommittee also report out on to the rack as well with their thoughts. So wanted to turn it over, really, if the committee had interest in forming an ad hoc subcommittee to review these changes and the proposals in detail. Um, with county staff um, ahead of a, a December meeting where where we'd ask for your consideration um, sort of toward the board.
E.
Thank you. Um, what has been presented to us is the complete draft as of now. Okay, so um, I have a question under priority of use number three.
So I'm gonna, I'm not going to be able to talk about details because unfortunately Wes isn't here.
Okay, well, maybe you can answer this though. I don't know, but number three, see. Store and put to beneficial use such as. I, one, two, three, four, environment, of course, goes up. And now, is this a set priority list here or is this uh, just? Pulled out of the air and in no specific order. The way it's written, we've one say that this is a specific order of priorities.
I don't, I don't know. Um, we do have a question online, Patricia.
I actually, I just wanted to say that if a subcommittee is formed, I would be interested in serving.
I just have a question on time, you know, but dealing with a project in the fall, are we going to have? Is the plan that at the November meeting, this ad hoc committee would report back? And that's where we would form an opinion or are we going to form an opinion if we form one? When this presentation is made, that's and it's made just before it goes to the, to to the county.
Uh, the idea would be um, that at the December meeting, the committee would hear from both county staff and the ad hoc subcommittee. That um, had, that that just gives us two months of staff time to meet with the group and and um. You know, I know, like this is a early September draft. I'm sure there's already been some changes. And um, so it just gives us some time. So I don't expect an update at the November meeting, something, unless we are pushing things back or something like that. Yeah.
Hey, you want to answer it?
Of course.
Um, Wes's note to you, which memo says that presenting the policy to the board supervisors in twenty twenty-five, so I'm pushing anywhere. Twenty-five or I mean.
I think the idea of being in December uh, here just allows if it's January or early February, we're not um. Coming to the committee is not uh. Delaying this.
Right, it seems like we'll want to, the county will have enough time to, we'll want to have enough time to get it right. So I hope we're not rushing.
Yeah.
So is there an app, I was just asking, is there an appetite for forming a subcommittee that could work with Wes? Get brief with him, report back to this committee in, as a December meeting? Christine.
Well, my initial thought is that this is a fairly short document. That my question, for instance, doesn't need an ad hoc committee to answer it. If we're going to have a presentation here, it's small enough, it seems that that can be an agenda item. We can have a discussion here. Um, any points that might come up with anyone, but it doesn't seem like it's all that complicated to. And in depth to need uh, an ad hoc committee. I'm not opposed to it if somebody wants to do that, but I'm looking at this and then looking at what was previously written in episode three and. The changes that are made, but there's not anything that seems to me that really has a lot of red lights or issues to it. But that's just my initial take on it. I'm of course with others, like Eric can't say.
Well, I largely concur, but what I would suggest is that in advance of the December meeting. And after everybody gets through the obsessive compulsive period leading up to the election. Um, that there be a message put out to all of us, basically inviting written comments. And that those written comments be incorporated into the agenda when it comes out.
And by then, do you expect that staff would have time to meet and make more updates as was just mentioned that staff is going to be continuing working?
Yes. Well, the timing would kind of.
New stuff, we would have them be able to, yes, do the question.
There would be an interval, it might just be a week or two, an interval between when the agenda is put together. And when we would have the information from staff in advance of that, whatever that period is, again, just a. A formal solicitation of individual opinions and agency opinions through the rack to be part of the agenda. Agenda record or even if needed, an agenda, a tandem, you know, that it comes out at the last minute.
Eric could be posted on, posted online ahead of time, just on our, on our website. Like how the board does it, not necessarily in the.
I think rather than designating a few people, I think the more are looking at this, the better. And that people will be more inclined to look at it if we don't have to figure out when and where we're going to meet extra.
Yes.
You know, I actually was kind of thinking the same thing. I agree with with Eric. You know, you're trying to, I guess, absorb the language somewhat. I I don't know if it needs an ad hoc. Yeah. But if we could just get a, even a week, you know, like I don't have anything to do on Thanksgiving, that people get it then, but you know. But I mean, you know, even a week in advance would be helpful to kind of, you know, you know, take it in, figure it out. You know, think about it a little bit. And mark, mark it up like there's a normal.
Andy.
And then building on that concept, if in that December meeting, something big comes up that's alarming, that we feel like we need some response. The actual county meeting would be until Q one sometime that we could, um, at that time, if we felt like we needed more. Um, a smaller group to draft specifically from which.
Any other thoughts or sensing that we?
We have one online and we have Clint as well.
Oh, Clint, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, not have, I don't, maybe the only thing I would recommend for staff's presentation to this, maybe December. Um, because I'm sure we're listening to this or maybe some issues, is it, it's kind of a scenario, you know, as far as what this policy looks like, how it's activated. Because I'm sure that's, by any day, we're here one in this room, it's probably position, it's like, okay, you know, this is what's the, how is that actually go? Right, we got two plus is that we're doing these, and I think it's just to give a sense of what the policy in action looks like. Let's see, that's just recognition on that part too. Could probably verify if um, there's any policy to do that. Or be anticipated, just be like, yeah.
Said there was someone coming online?
Yes, um, Peter Brown from Oceano.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I I just wanted to get back to Christine Mulholland's question. I I think it's an important one and I do know. Obviously can't speak for the county, but I do know that there is interest in some level of refinement and rank order and discussion about. Priorities and criteria. I think what was laid out there was was not necessarily in rank order, but those were the um. Uh, the criteria that need to be discussed and refined. And I think there's also a, a future discussion about the pros and cons of how specific versus how broad. Uh, we make those criteria. So I know that further information is is forthcoming on that and refinement.
Any other comments or thoughts?
So what I've heard is, I mean, I've heard from a couple in the committee, uh, preference would be to, rather than. Have staff lead a ad hoc committee, um, try to provide the, I guess. Draft policy and staff report a little bit ahead of time, you know, than our normal agenda process. And that would give committee members time to review on their own um, ahead of a December. I don't know the exact date. Meeting December first, I think. Let's just stick with that.
So, yeah, well, could we make that at least seven days in advance to December meeting and we'll schedule Wes for December?
Yeah, I think that that works because I don't want to be sending the agenda out on Thanksgiving, so.
Right.
It'll, it'll be at a minimum a few days early and I think we could, I, 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 without Wes being here, I feel like it's a fair.
And if we ask Wes to, I'm sure it'll undergo some revisions before we see it again, could you have a red line strike through version? So as it's changing, we can see what's being changed.
Um, I can ask, yes.
I realize it's short.
I'll, I'll, I'll be meeting with him at the end of the week, and if there's some, some significance, I'll let you know if changes are, you know, planned.
Sounds good.
We had a.
Jim?
Yeah.
Got a question online.
I did.
Well, my, my suggestion would be, having at least, since we're, since there is an older document. I like specifically what the changes are from, from, from previous policies. I always found that to be, trying to then pick them out. I maybe means adding, or explaining to them. I didn't think it'll help us form our discussion rather than re-discuss, discuss.
And Jim, here it is, this view of, oh, three.
But going back, we're, we're trying to figure out what has changed.
The new one that changes.
So like a little preface from Wes of what, what has changed in sort of overall terms? Well, even if we could get that in advance, because that, that's the key discussion. Otherwise, we'll get off into talking about all kinds of things. Right?
So Patricia?
Oh, Patricia, go ahead.
Yes, I just wondered, since we have individual comments coming in. If Brendan could in some way summarize or. Not prioritize, that's the wrong word, but kind of show us in summation form. You know, these seem to be consistent concerns, or these are common. Points that are being made some way that we're just not looking at this list of individual comments.
But if, if there are substantial, you do that, but anyways, or perhaps Wes, since he's the author of the document.
I don't want to commit to that, to be honest. I wanna, I don't want to be interpreting people's words more than.
Okay, so I guess at the meeting, then we will interpret them ourselves.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Notice similar concerns are coming from six or seven.
If there's obvious, sure, yeah.
At Wes's job.
Yeah, sorry.
Did you have? I was just kind of bringing a side comment out there that there's hazard in being the one interpreting.
Yes.
Everybody else's comments.
Yes, yes.
Yes. All right. Anything else on item five? Can, can this review process, what, what we're gonna see then?
So the current plan. Would be, or the, I guess the idea is we're gonna try to, ahead of the December meeting, where is where we're planning. Staff is planning to come to the rack in December for a, for the committee to consider the updated policy. And we will try to have that out early compared to our normal agenda packet process. And if I receive written comments ahead of the meeting, I'll post them on the website, similar to how the board supervisors does. So it won't be in the packet, but it will be posted on the website. If I, this, it doesn't normally happen, but sometimes I get side letters ahead of time before an item, and I do try to post them. And so that would, that'll be the plan. And then I'll talk to Wes. When he's back in the office about, you know, double checking this, and if I have any changes, I'll let you know in November.
One more question on text, it's a very large page. Where it's talking about usage, uh, at number six, the last page, it has a twenty eight of foot. Comment on the last line, and I'm not quite sure I understand that, where you will be now increase in cost. And now due, your allocation is less than twenty eight feet will be allowed. I'm not quite sure what that means. The lines there. Is there a measure of twenty eight feet?
The urgency orders, twenty eight feet has been reported as the de minimis. Meaning, like. Single residence extractor. Differentiator between larger agricultural use and individuals.
David, I think that's a great question for you to email Wes. I'm gonna be honest, I think I might know the answer, but I'm not gonna guess.
I think it's an inflated de minimis number, but that inflated number is how many policies now.
That's. I, I'm out of my wheelhouse, so I'm not gonna comment.
Anything else on item five? Anything online?
Tina?
Move on to item six then, feedback to county staff regarding updates to the rain and reservoirs.
All right.
It's also.
Yes, it is. Um, all right, so, awesome, this is half up on the screen. Something I've, I've been thinking about a little bit, and Troy is here. Troy is also in our Water Resources Division. For those who haven't met him, and I have asked him, and we've kind of been working on. Refreshing and revamping the rain and reservoir report, and I have a few goals in mind, like I've written in the staff report ultimately. I would like to have this document automatically connect to our online data system. And be able to be routinely refreshed on our website. And available for people to view. Obviously, we have our slowcountingwater.org website where you can view specific gauges really well. But obviously, this is a summary that the committee has been seeing for a long time in a format that's very familiar. And so, want to just put in front of you, rather than just changing it and, and. Seeing what happens, just thought I'd ask if there were, you know, what everyone thought about this updated format. And get some ideas, if there's ideas on things you would like to see on the rain and reservoir report. Here are the key changes, we, you know, moved some columns around for legibility. And separated out the flood control district owned sites versus the non-flood control sites. Frankly, the, the rain gauges. The non-county sites, we, we get emailed that data, or it's from websites, or, so it comes in kind of random times, or when we ask for it. And not the best process, so I'm kind of a fan of. Like not including the non-county sites moving forward. And let's see, we've also included, there's an acronym here, WPA. This is a water planning area. This is an acronym you've maybe, maybe seen or maybe not seen, but it's, the water planning areas are aggregations of our watersheds. It's just kind of a way to regionalize the county, what we've been using in our, in our division for our RDM plan, for our master water report and other things, so. Trying to kind of get some more consistency with that language. And, yeah, so I'll just turn around, open it up, and see if there's any thoughts or comments or, or whatever.
First, compliments, one of the things I liked very much online is those graphs that show accumulation. Oh, they're during storms and after storms, see when each place was in an additive way. Getting their, their highest bursts of rainfall and so on. I'm not saying that needs to be part of any printed. Material, because it would be very, very bulky, but I'm just calling attention to right. I'm glad to see it there. And I like the, the way you have the format now. I think the one question. Because it seems as if different entities are in different universes about, is the water year. From July first to June thirtieth, or from October first to September thirtieth? I like the July first to June thirtieth, it kind of aligns with the summer solstices and so on. But I know some entities now have moved to using the other one, so. Are we making a deliberate stand for the old way?
I think we have been July first to June thirtieth, and there's no, there's not a outside force to cause change to that yet, so that we would continue doing that.
Well, I'll back you up on that. Thank you.
That makes a question, how's the state doing? How do they travel?
The beginning of the state's water year is October first.
Yeah, see, that's problematic, because I've always known it is July first since. So why would the state make it to make, make that change and, and what, and how do they? Like, how did that even happen? And how does the rest of the country even do that? It seems kind of preposterous that we will have different metrics, timings.
I don't know. I don't know if Troy has some commentary on that, but.
Generally, as to the seasonality of the water supply in different areas, the state as a whole is much more dependent on snow. And so even imagine that, why there here starts on October, it's very, very. Possibly it's snow before October, or we can get splashing in the rain in the summer. But statewide, it's just.
Build formulas and just to make those adjustments when we want to, the totality of everything, right?
Yes.
That's requires all kinds of adjustments. That's where errors come out, right? Unfortunately. Okay, thank you.
Prestige, John. Jim? My comment is maybe changing the font upon the totals. I, I realize it's a big document, but the thinking that the total is a little bit. Yes, it's all I know. So granted, we're looking at it portrait, at landscape problems.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'd say part of the. Part of the driver, I think, for having the, the font is a little smaller, is we included all the district gauges, not just. The current rain and reservoir report is a, a selection. I couldn't tell you the origin of that selection. You know, where it's, once we set up, hey, Excel, go get this data from our database, click. You know, whether it's one row or, or twenty five rows, it's, it's, it's the same now. So we, we started with including all the sites. But, so one way we could increase, make it easier to keep it on one page is we could. Remove a few sites, but I, we can play around with it and see if we can get the font a little bigger, too.
Yeah, so margin doesn't necessarily have to be all that. They're just gonna start traveling around with.
Any other input or comments?
I see that on, you know, six, because the answer before was conserving April twenty four, and any other reservoirs? On the docket, are we reserving?
Same ocean was also resurfaced this past year, folks, and this is the focus of the platform, to re-qualify based on settlement. Previously, I believe in the nineties for this forest. But I don't know any other plans. The, the reason Slimes noted it, Lokas is that. The changes in Lokas were less, and the data did not change, the data did change.
The rainfall data from nineteen ninety eight onward is all. Updating and informing, making updates to standard or on each one.
It's on the list. And by the list, I mean that, I, that's something I would like to take a look at and update. And. I, you know, if it's in the, if I had my way, maybe in the next year or two, we'd start to figure out how we, how we could look at that, but. Obviously, when you see. That the average is calculated from nineteen fifty five to nineteen ninety eight, we have twenty seven years of data since then. So there's, I think. You know, there's a, there's an opportunity there, and that's something I would like to look at. Yeah.
Can you say you were thinking of eliminating some sites? How, how many you thought? Open the feedback.
Open the feedback.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Right? Move on to. Item seven, ongoing updates, talked about the rain and reservoir.
You might see this format next, next month.
Maybe the side ways out of the page can be bigger.
We'll, we'll work on trying to maximize the font.
Ground updates. Groundwater basin management efforts. Blood control zones. Related regional water management. Master water report. State water project. So. Various county water programs.
One.
Yes.
One note, next Tuesday, consent item fifteen on the board of supervisors agenda. Has to do with repairs needed on the Nassimeno Pipeline where it crosses the airport, Boyina Creek and San Margarita. And I think tracking the extent, there seem to be some chronic issues. And tracking over time, this may lead into future agenda items, but basically. Hopefully, the problem will be solved and all will be well, but we can kind of track that issue over time. And some might be interesting, seeing whether the item gets pulled or not. As I say, it is a consent item now. And looks pretty routine, and hopefully they'll get it fixed, but. There, there, there is a history of leaks at that location and a few others.
Thank you, Eric.
I was wondering when it becomes vulnerable, you couldn't print things like the Key Wells Index out of the Pomo. And we've got these things in here, we've got Passa Redd's base, but three in rack, get no information whatsoever on the condition of groundwater in that base. And it seems to be held within the signal groups, and it'd be nice if, certainly David comes out, that rack could see it. For many of these, it's a base, adjudicated basins or signal bases.
Yeah, I think that, the short answer would be that there is, you know, like. The Los Sosus Basin publishes their annual report, and it's available for everyone to, to look at. And there's not a necessarily. A. Place for this committee to advise the board on what's happening in that adjudicated basin, for example.
It's the function of this being interreactual. So you guys know is, we all need to learn from each other about what's going on. And it would say to me that, you know, it'd be nice for people to know what was going on in these basins without having to search individually. You are the collector of information.
That's, I think that's the, the intent of the ongoing updates, we're providing, what, here's what happened, you know, where in the next meeting is, this what happened at the last meeting? And here's where you can go get more information, can be a gateway for that, absolutely.
So maybe just the URLs.
Okay.
Right?
I think I want to make a comment. Very long, this conversation just gets tighter and more because down in the Pomo. Since I happen to know that basin the best of all reasons. Is that what I find most troubling for me as a homeowner, a wealth purveyor. Having a well, is that I cannot look at one report to give a total picture. I have to read everything from Santa Barbara County, for Royal Grande, Guadalupe even. Nohuelo, everywhere, to get a feel for what's really going on in this adjudicated basin. And I've brought it up to the supervisors that we really need to have a report. That assesses San Maria, for instance, because they have their own reports. And if we're not looking at this whole basin as a totality, and I can't read it without spending months to find out the answers. Then, you know, there's a lot of things that are going to fall through cracks, and I just feel like a master report for that basin. I can't speak for other basins, is really, really imperative. I'm, I'm serious. It's so important, because the data's wrong. I can give my will as a perfect example of my property as having about eight times more water pumping. They, that, that we have that came with our property than is listed. I also have a deep attached well, six surfaces, not even on the list. So when I see this master or what's going on in the basin there, I'm freaking out at it because I see gaps all the time. And if there's not a master report for the whole. And if there's not a master report for the whole basin that I can read this report without going all over, then. I think that we're, we're not servicing a community very well because the next drought is already here, it's going to arrive today. And we're already a low priority basin again. Two, the two years of well debt. Small amounts of well debt, like.
Eric, a vocabulary about droughts in California could be kind of likely cancer. It can be in remission. We have drought and there are periods when it goes into remission, but in, in, in order to, to, uh. Help solve the issue that you're raising, which I think is very important, uh, is the adjudication process itself? An obstacle to the creation of that sort of holistic look?
It could be, that's right.
And if so, are there ways to? Either leverage the adjudication process or go around it? Given that there are multiple jurisdictions here, it's probably not an easy puzzle to solve, but. I can, I can see and visualize the desperate need for what you're asking for.
Well.
And having judges make decisions. Uh, who don't have an education in these issues. Doesn't seem particularly amenable to giving the public that kind of a look.
Right, I mean, I mean, I've had to really spend a lot of. To learn basin because I knew it from twenty five years ago, but to catch up is pretty tremendous. I'm just, I'm lucky that I know how to do it.
What, what kind of data would be the most helpful to me? Is it like? Key wells or wells if you're going dry?
Okay, so how, we have new wells, uh, that were drilled. Uh, we have wells that we don't know if they're still being used. Right? We don't know that, both that database from the, the, the health department has to do with the wells that were, were drilled. We have no idea how many were tamped down, we have no idea how many that were upgraded. Right? I mean, when I look at my well from nineteen eighty. That data was already there and it's missing in that database. And to me, if we're not, we've got to be brai- razor focused on everybody's water and I'm not saying that. Um. I, I just think that. We have to have a way, well, for instance. We're spending millions of dollars on having reports written by subcontractors. All over the place. That seems to me to not be very fiscally, um. Helpful, because we're spending a million here, a million there, Santa Barbara County is doing it. Uh, all over the county, we're spending all this money on all these reports, but that, reports are four or five of them. We could consolidate those into maybe two or three reports and save ourselves some money. And, and that's where the fiscal, I, I, I'd like to be responsible. And that is part of my issue too, is responsibility fiscally on how much money we're spending. And having incomplete or incomplete data in one spot. I mean, Santa Barbara County has a pretty nice database and I find it most finding. The, uh, blame really, I can't get much out of that website at all, I don't know. Me if you can on that. If I say you're right.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying. I'm breaking out about the South County, we might have had great rain. But I'm on my property, I know. We're not after drought. And we can't use well data that says we're a low priority. Continually like that, because now we're, we're, we're right on the edge. And they made everything good, so we have new wells being drilled. Two, three wells in my neighborhood and I hear. One of them is an ad, that I didn't think we were doing. So that's what's bothering me. It's not there, the info's not there. I want, I want ninety percent accuracy, not. Fifty. And this isn't a burn on anybody, I'm just saying that's in my exploration.
I think the only stuff that comes out there is the Key Wells Index.
And that's.
And that's all there is.
You can't even, I mean, finding the raw data for the Key Wells Index, that was something I was trying to dig up. I found the Key Wells data report, but where's the raw data? That was another thing that I couldn't find and that, uh, change of the summer. If you want to look at the Santa Barbara County data, you can get great, uh, there's a really good report there. Uh, that I got on the water. That was a problem.
Eric, adjudication of permanent state of that basin, or is it something that's going to be wrapped up at some point? And then the people of the basin can take ongoing responsibility and essentially organize around. Collecting and amassing the data you need, I, I don't understand quite. You know, it's been in the communication, which sounds like a process for quite a long time, is it? A process with an outcome and when and where?
It's down, but.
It's permanent, it has to be carefully watched down there. Very true.
So somehow then the adjudication process has gotten to be. Able to accommodate. The public information that is needed.
The application's completed. But, but. Well, so they report, so the different. Areas of the San Maria basin all have to report to the court separately.
Yeah.
They create separate reports for their. Call it their deal. You know, um, and you, you should be able, whether you get to the raw data or not, you would be able to take those for the course.
I know that for all of you. That basin, you have to read up on the reports. And there should be some overarching, I mean, if we have a adjudicated basin, it should be at the top. That's true.
It exempts you from forming a GSA, basically, there's the fringe areas, but apart from that. The courts, I guess, are substituting for the GSA and that process that would otherwise happen, is that?
I, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know GSA, that's all I think.
And I don't, I don't see the individuals. Basically, some law or giving up their deal. Or the, the.
It's a power thing, you're looking at.
I don't follow the power thing.
Is there any? We have. Are there any expert in water law or something?
I think we're getting into the woods here, this is not exactly a genderized discussion.
This is, this is moving into future agenda items, which, which I'm trying to leverage it in that direction, there's an obvious need. Are, are, is there some? Realm of expertise somewhere that could be called upon to present to us what obstacles might get to that place?
Well, we can take those as a future agenda item, Eric, and see what applies.
It's pretty vague right now, but, uh, I think you got, you got the picture. What we want to.
I think we have someone online who wanted to comment.
Yeah, great, go ahead, you should be able to unmute. Let's try and unmute. You want to unmute for? That's not allowing me. Greg, could you, let's see. Yeah, yeah, Greg, if you're unable to unmute, uh, feel free to type in your question as well. So many, many to sit back here.
Sorry, I didn't mean to derail the meeting here.
Why we're here.
Well, it just kind of, it's helpful because, you know.
Right, it's great typing.
I was.
Okay.
I was probably trying to figure.
We'll move on, we can move back to anything, uh, if to read that.
Okay.
So any other, um, I think the last item under ongoing updates was open reporting on water conservation, I'll give you some information. Not, then we'll move on to future agenda items, discussed one great thoroughly already, uh, any others? But a public comment for items not on the agenda.
Well, before you go away on future things, I think with an item that's been raised here of considerable concern.
Yes.
And maybe RAC needs to consider asking for reports from the various adjudicated basins to update RAC on what conditions are. And it may be a discussion item, whether we want to do that or not. Nevertheless, all the mental power information input, uh, in some way, that seems to be an issue here. Um, discuss that a little and enjoy it maybe as a future item.
I, I think we. I, I think we've been through this, we, we spent a year on the bylaws going through this and we ended up in the same place where we're at, I. So I, it's. The, we advise the. We advise the flood control and water conservation district and the groundwater basins have. Established direct. Uh. Agencies or, uh, entities. That advise the board directly on those basins and those issues and. And, you know, with some adjudicated basins, the counties. I don't even think it stipulated part in a few of these, so it's, there's. I mean. We can provide. Providing a link to the annual report when it comes out, that's a, that's a easy thing relatively for us to do, um, but I think we. We need to, we need to stay within our, our, our charge here, um, as a committee and it's. We, we went through this last year in great detail and we. Made zero, we did not make it, pose a change to that. It was we, the committee, not, not me, but. So we can, we can, uh, look at for the annual reports, some are easier to find than others, um, and. Kind of go from there, uh, great, great.
Well, it's her and Greg, one of the time, we can move back to my second, it's still muted.
It's like you're still trying to connect.
Okay.
Sorry, Greg, you're still muted.
Yeah. There we go, so any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Proceed, let's try.
Thank you, I wanted to share with you. Event that I attended, I was invited to take part, it's a groundwater symposium. SOAR Ventura nonprofit that has over four thousand members. And this happened on September twenty first down at Seasucky Cal State, oh, there you are. Cal State University Channel Islands. The opening comment was made by Fran Cav. Who, of course, you may know as the author of Sigma. We celebrated ten years of. Sigma just recently, and yet there continue to be a lot of us who think that it's not going to help because it has such a long timeframe. To bring basins into sustainability. After Fran, there was a panel. Of farmers and cabinet, small family farmers in Huayam. Now, some of us have been around on this committee for a long time, we took a presentation before Sigma. And we're told that at that time, the Huayama basin had a safe end yield of around eighty nine hundred acre feet. And yet at that time, Huayama was drilling thirty four thousand acre feet deep ancient water and they're still doing it today. And these small farmers are being outwatered and they've all been sued, we talked about adjudication, that just means lawsuit. They're all sued, including the school district, everybody. Big Carrot has sued everybody. In Huayama. Then there was a panel of small farmers from Moore Park area, the Atavoy Farms, Atavoy Acres and some others. Who are also being de-watered by Big A. They're losing after fifty years of supplying farmers markets, small stores, small farmers. The fly being wiped out by Big A and the effort of this. Discussion was to save water and the family farm. And those of us who. Like myself, have generations of small family farms. Understand conservation, the value of district water, if you happen to have district water over the San Joaquin Valley. The fact that small farms are being wiped out all over by Big A. And they're suing the small people and running them out and draining the basins and continuing to drill ancient water with. Nothing stopping them between now and twenty forty, there's not going to be anything left of sustainability by that time, in my opinion. So when I got up to talk, I was addressing, I was asked to address history, I have some water history in my family. And then my father starting a farm, a family farm in San Joaquin Valley in nineteen fifty five and then bringing it back over to our county in Huayama, which of course. Involves four different counties. Poor Brian, he stood up after me and he said, that's a hard act to follow, because I said, I'm just getting really tired of hearing from farmers saying that. We have to feed the world. Well, you can't feed the world on the water in California, and I said, we must keep repeating that, say it over and over, we cannot feed the world on the water in California. I also want to let you know that there is a wonderful. Reporter in the LA Times, he's writing all kinds of water articles from Sonoma, uh, Clamath Dam's coming down the Kern River. Fish dying off, Ian James is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful writer. He was at this event, he came to speak to me, turns out we're neighbors, he lives now in San Luis Obispo. So, uh, I encourage you to go online, look up Ian James. And read some of his water articles if you feel I'm doing so, excellent writer, in my opinion, really wonderful. And of course, we could come up with any total solutions at this event, but. And it's not on ours, Jen, it's, I'm telling you about this now, but it was a very good event and, uh. I think that we need to continue to put more focus, focus on small farms. And Big A. There's not any big market across this whole country that isn't getting their carrot back, we. Only buy your carrots at a farmer's market, please. Because we basically want to stand in Huayama and wake up Big Carrot. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Is this SOAR now an organization? I thought it was an ordinance, uh, that has been approved by the people, if they're also an organization.
It's a nonprofit, SOAR is a nonprofit, they have, uh, five oh one, some three and five, six.
Is it an acronym?
Save, Open Space and Agricultural Resources, SOAR, Save, Open Space and Agricultural Resources.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine, any other items? Public comment that will not on the agents? If not. We'll see everybody at the meeting in November.
Thank you so much. Thank you.